I'd like to call this Smithfield Town Council meeting to order Tuesday, November 18, 2025. There were no votes taken in executive session, regular meeting, and I was where executive session votes, we had none. Uh, the prayer. Thank God for the opportunity to me and ask for the help of making wisdom decisions and request that our group work together respectfully. Amen. So look to the flag.
Emergency evacuation and health notification. In the event that the council chambers has to be emptied, there's two exits out of the chambers to the very rear, exit door. You go out that door, stairway is right, you out to the front of the building. Second exit is to my way where the exit sign is, uh, up that stairway and out the side, to the side of the building. Do not use the elevator in front of an emergency. Ladies room and men's room directly out the rear door. Men's room is to the, uh, right, the lower step, and then go up two steps. Ladies room is to the left.
Thank you. Number five, presentations, Freedom Energy Logistics.
Uh, I thank you to the, uh, the council for, uh, having us here tonight. I am Bart Frommuth, the Chief Executive Officer of Freedom Energy Logistics. I'm joined by my consultant, Ryan Holt.
Thanks, Bart. Really quick, Mr. President, nice to see you. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Ryan Holt. I'm the consultant of Freedom Energy. Uh, I'm an attorney, I'm a lobbyist. In my past, I was Chief of Staff to Mayor Grabian of Pawtucket, uh, also head of Legislative Affairs for Attorney General Nerona. Uh, so happy to be here representing Freedom Energy. And I know Bart, uh, will leave you all in good hands. So thank you very much for having us here tonight.
Thank you, Ryan.
Uh, so very nice to see you again, President Tisoni and Chief Seltzer, uh, after we met for the first time this summer. Um, why I'm here tonight is to present, uh, uh, Community Choice Aggregation. So in your packets tonight, you should have gotten some materials to follow along with the presentation. I'll kind of give you an overview, but please feel free to ask any questions while I'm going over, um, uh, the, the offering and, um, you know, happy to, uh, to answer any questions that you might have. So, uh, Community Choice Aggregation is essentially a, uh, townwide electricity buying group, uh, that's somewhat new to the state of Rhode Island. It was authorized back in, uh, in around 2019 by the legislature here in Rhode Island in the first programs in Rhode Island rolled out in 2023. It's largely modeled after our neighbors to the north in Massachusetts who have had Community Choice Aggregation for about 15 years. Uh, Massachusetts has, uh, about 200 active communities in this program currently. And the idea behind it was when Massachusetts and then later Rhode Island were looking at how could they give electric choice to smaller ratepayers, small businesses and homeowners? Uh, how could they make the programs as meaningful as what we see in the commercial industrial context? What could they do to, um, to promote those programs? Now, everyone at your home here in Smithfield has the opportunity to purchase competitive electricity beyond or besides Rhode Island Energy. Um, you have rates available to you. The problem with those rates is the fact that they're usually teaser rates, three months, six months. You sign up, you stop paying attention, your rates go up into an out of contract situation, uh, and you give back all of your savings and then some. But one of the things that this program affords is because we're collecting all the ratepayers in Smithfield that buy from Rhode Island Energy, we can get an excellent group purchasing rate. And that's how we're able to go ahead and overall lower costs and compete significantly with the Rhode Island Energy offering. Uh, now Rhode Island Energy provides the default service rate. That's the rate that you have at your homes if you do nothing, if you make no affirmative choice. That rate recently went from about 10 and a half cents to 14.77 cents as of October 4th. Uh, so that was a significant increase of almost 40% in terms of people's electricity budget, and that's only for half of the bill. Uh, when you're on a fixed income, fixed budget and you're wondering, you know, why is it that I use the same amount of electricity, uh, in October as I did in September, but yet my, my bill would just went up by a hundred dollars? That's one of the things that this program seeks to, um, uh, to improve is to give rate stability and budget savings. So Rhode Island Energy can only go out for six months at a time, which is why there's all that volatility. With a Community Choice Aggregation program, you can go out one year, two year, three year, four years and give that rate stability, which is a very, um, attractive feature. There's a few communities that have been doing this so far in Rhode Island and that had excellent savings to report. If you take a look at Massachusetts, there was a report done in 2023 by UMass Amherst that found that since the inception of Community Choice Aggregation in Massachusetts, 79% of all aggregations saved money versus the utility standard offer. Um, one of the things I also want to point out, uh, with this program is that there's no cost to the community in terms of general funds. So if you bring on a consultant like Freedom Energy Logistics, we handle everything turnkey. There could be no, um, funds used by the general funds to pay for the program. So it's entirely self-funded by those that participate. Um, if you hire us, we have a, a five-year, uh, consulting contract. Uh, that contract does not obligate you to move forward in the program. There's an entire process that we have to develop an aggregation plan, and that plan talks about, uh, whether or not the community wants to, um, prioritize saving money. You can also, in that plan, prioritize renewable inclusion as part of your platform if you want to save money and meet some of your, uh, sustainability goals. You can also build into the plan a reserve fund, a reserve energy fund that can be used, uh, for anything from, uh, changing out streetlights or, uh, some of your building lights to more efficient light bulbs or, uh, a fund to help people that, uh, are, um, a lower income to help pay their energy bills, things of that nature. So there's a couple of different ways you can organize your plan. We help develop all of that for you and then submit to the Public Utilities Commission, uh, for eventual approval, and then you move forward with your plan. We then get an RFP together to submit electricity rates from the available bidders in, in state, and it's up to the town and the town's designee, which is typically going to be the town manager, whether or not to sign that contract and move forward. But it's important to note that there's a lot of work that we can do on the upfront to get you street legal for Community Choice Aggregation, and you do not have to move forward just because you've signed our consulting agreement. We could get to the RFP process and Smithfield simply says, this isn't for us, we want to pause for now, and you can do that. There's no early termination fee. So it's, it's really free, uh, for you in terms of exploring this and just seeing if this is something that the community would like to do before making your final, uh, determination when we get to the supplier, uh, the supplier bidding, um, uh, opportunity. Um, that's kind of like an overview of the plan, and I know I'm kind of throwing a lot of information at you, but if you guys have some questions for me that I can help answer, I'd be happy to do so.
Uh, one of the questions I have is, is, uh, if we were to move forward.
Yeah.
And the chief signs the agreement, is there an opt-out clause in there in case what you tell us is not accurate?
Yeah, so.
It's not the savings that you say we're gonna get?
Correct. So anybody, similar to what you experienced right now with Rhode Island Energy, you can stand Rhode Island Energy for as long or short as you want, come and go without any, uh, exit fees, termination fees. The same is true of the aggregation, uh, supply contract. It's, it's made to mirror default service from Rhode Island Energy so that you can come and go as you please. Let's say we have a situation where we signed a two-year agreement, and a year and a half into the agreement, the Rhode Island Energy rates fall below the aggregation rate. Anybody in the program can leave at any time to go back to Rhode Island Energy, so it's just another option that the community has for reduced electricity, uh, rates. And given the track record and how we go about procuring electricity, there's a high probability, as we've seen in Massachusetts and other states that have adopted this, that there's a significant savings and budget stability to be had. When you look at how Rhode Island Energy procures their electricity rates and why they're so volatile, it's almost like an alarm clock goes out, and this is based upon the rules and tariffs that are in place here in Rhode Island. It's not their fault, they're not a bad company, but they go on, they procure in August, and they procure again in February, regardless of what the market's doing at the time. So it makes it very, very easy for us because we're using all 12 months of the year to find market opportunities to source rates below what Rhode Island Energy, uh, is able to come up with, and that's a significant strategic advantage for us.
Do you have a list of references that we can call that you've done business with so we can double? I'm not.
Yeah.
questioning you, but.
Yeah.
I want to do, you know, what we need to do as, as far as, uh, homework before we make a decision like that. So if you could get those to Bob.
Yeah.
And then we'll, uh, we'll make some calls, uh.
Definitely.
Any questions from the council?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you for your presentation. I'm just wondering how this came about. Like, how did you get to a point where it's before us this evening?
Uh, I've had a, a couple, uh, conversations with, uh, Chief Seltzer and, and President Tisoni. Um, I was supposed to be on the agenda, I think a month or two ago, and just from a mix-up from my office, we had to push it back. Uh, but just, you know, making phone calls, this is probably the... Oh, uh, in terms of how it came about, it's, it's also state law, um, if that was part of your question.
No, I was just wondering how it got on our agenda tonight. Did you, do you sort of like, is it?
Cold outreach, cold outreach.
Oh, you did? Okay, got it.
Yeah. So this is, um, this is probably my 19th presentation across the state of Rhode Island and very, very active over the last year, just bringing this opportunity to different communities.
I just had one other thing. You know, they say when things are free, you're the product, so I'm just wondering sort of what, if any, there is a catch, you know? There must be something here.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Respectfully.
Yeah, no, absolutely. These are great questions. So we get paid through the programs. Let's say that we source a rate of nine cents a kilowatt hour for the town of Smithfield, and their RI energy rate to compare against is 11 cents per kilowatt hour. Our fee is one-tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour, and that gets paid through program participants. So instead of nine cents, it'd be 9.1 cents inclusive of our fee. Now, the other thing just to point out and to, and to iterate here is the fact that it is an opt-out program. What that means is we've had opt-in aggregation available in Rhode Island for 25 years now. Unfortunately, the cost per customer acquisition, the lack of adoption made it such that Rhode Island wanted to find a mechanism that brought more, um, critical mass, if you will, for the portfolio to get these special rates. And so that's where they mirrored the Massachusetts program with an opt-out model, meaning anybody can opt out of the program at any time, but it is offered to the entire community that's on default service. Uh, so when it's initially offered, they're gonna get a notification in the mail, giving them 30 days to communicate back to us they want to get opted out. But if they miss that for any reason, or they want to opt out later on in time, they can do that without any fees just by, uh, sending an email, going online, making a phone call to us or the utility company.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Rhode Island communities have this right now?
Uh, so the biggest is Providence. Providence is one of the first communities to adopt that, uh, adopt this program. Um, you also have, um, uh, I think it's North Kingstown is involved in the program currently. Um, and I'm trying to think who. Uh, Newport, Portsmouth, and Middletown.
Is the Westerly in here, Wesley Rhode Island?
Wesley is one of our clients. They have not, um, chosen their supply rate yet, but they're in the process.
I need an question about, uh, how do you select the opt-in folks that will be asked to join into this? So how do you determine who those people are? Because you've got businesses, you've got residential.
Sure. God, great question. So we get, um, once you've submitted your plan to the Public Utilities Commission and it's, and it's approved, we then have the ability to ask Rhode Island Energy for the customer uni-universe for Smithfield Rhode Island, and they'll just give us anonymized data that tells us which accounts are on default service and which accounts are on competitive supply. The opt-out notification only goes to those accounts that are on default supply with Rhode Island Energy. In other words, they haven't made an affirmative choice to go into contract with anybody else, and that's the universe that we mail and notify that they'll be swept into the program unless they opt out during that initial period. And if they miss that again, they can opt out at any point in time. If you kind of think about it in the same way that when you might have moved to, to Smithfield, no one gave you a choice, you just opted basically into the Rhode Island Energy default service rate. What the legislature has enabled you to do through the statute is switch that default product, um, the Smithfield Community Choice Aggregation for what was in place with Rhode Island Energy.
Are your rates always lower than Rhode Island Energy?
They're, they're not always lower. There's no guarantee that they're always going to be lower, but if you take a look at overall performance of aggregations and their model versus the default service here in New England, there's significant data, as I mentioned in that UMass Amherst study, because Rhode Island is a very, very new state to this, that, um, 79.5%, something over 79%, have saved money since the inception of their programs and aggregation. And Governor Healy is actually taking a look at, look at, um, banning the residential marketplace in Massachusetts so that you can't make a decision for your own home anymore. But the one area that she's carved out as a safe haven is any community that's participating in Community Choice Aggregation because the results have been so successful in that aspect, but so unsuccessful for homeowners just making their own determinations.
I mean, the reason I ask that question is because, uh, the opt-in process is you're automatically opt-in if you're not with another third-party.
Yes.
Basically. So how do you notify people that they've been opting into this and they have the option to opt out?
So every, um, ratepayer that's on default service in Smithfield will receive a notification, um, once a supplier's been selected and about 40 days prior to when enrollments would start under that supply contract, they're sent a notification. Smithfield is launching their Community Choice Aggregation program. There'll be a public information session that will also advertise, uh, that will usually be 15 days after the notifications have gone out, and they have the, uh, opportunity to send back notifications in the form of a small opt-out card or a QR code, or they can go online or make a phone call, many different vehicles to let us know that they'd like to opt out. Similarly, for anybody that's currently in a third-party supply contract, there's a card they can fill out to opt into the program, but since they're under contract already, we don't sweep them in, we wait for their affirmative decision to do so. And you get typically around, uh, 90 to 95% adoption rates, uh, for aggregations in terms of ratepayers that join the aggregation and then stay over long durations. So they're very, very successful in terms of keeping the ratepayers there. And I, again, I think it's, it's not just the savings, but that budget stability. Um, COVID is a great example. We had really, really low rates and, and Boston locked into a multi-year contract at nine cents. By the time the war in Ukraine broke out, as well as the reopening post-COVID, kind of reopening the economy, uh, rates in Boston went to 32 cents a kilowatt hour, and they were stabilized at nine cents. So huge savings. I don't mean to indicate that that's going to happen here, but just as an idea as to how this program is very protective in that way.
So if you provide us more information, uh, will you be able to show some of the statistical data so that we can see that?
Yes.
Yeah, there was some true savings here or whatever.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So just to be clear, how this works is that if we say, okay, we want to use, use this program.
Hmm.
The council votes for it, then every resident and every business in the town of Smithfield is automatically in the program if Rhode Island Energy is their supplier. Is that correct?
If Rhode Island Energy is, is just the, the commodity supplier. So one thing I want to point out on that is that Rhode Island Energy will still come to your home, uh, fix any metering issues if there's a power outage, but yes, if they're on default supply, um, they would get the opt-out notice. And that's how we get the critical mass, uh, to get the lower rates and the, the contracts that compete with what we see in the commercial industrial context.
So ev-every resident that's now a Rhode Island Energy's, uh, they have Rhode Island Energy as a supplier would be in this?
Unless they opted out, correct.
So they would have to take an affirmative action to opt out of it?
Yes.
And if they opt out, they can either go to a different supplier or go back to Rhode Island Energy, is that?
Correct, correct. They go, just stay with, if they opt out originally, they're just going to stay with Rhode Island Energy unless they make an affirmative decision to go with another supplier. If they don't meet the first opt-out period, let's say that Smithfield signed a three-year contract at nine cents, they might stay with it for six months' time, opt out for a few months if they find something better, and then come back in. So there's migration, uh, both ways, but the program will always be there as a default option for the length of the term.
So they have a time limit before they can opt out?
It's just the time limit is only, um, related to that initial rollout. If they never want to be on it, they got the initial, you know, 30 days, which goes 40 days prior to the first enrollments. They have 30 days to opt out if they never want to touch it. After that 30 days is passed, they can still leave at any time without any fees, still going, using all those different mechanisms I mentioned earlier, either phone, email, online.
Now, if the rates go beyond what's being charged by Rhode Island Energy, you still get your, uh, percentage even though you're not saving us, uh, any money?
It's, it's not, not a percentage, but my, my fee is one-tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour. So it is, it's built into the rate, so who's ever participating in the program is, is paying that fee, if you will, so that, that point when, uh, that tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour.
So they pay the fee no matter what? Doesn't matter what the rates are?
That, that's correct, but the, the track record is, is, is pretty substantial in terms of the savings. The other thing I think that's important to note is that the Rhode Island Energy rate is always posted right next to the Community Choice Aggregation rate. So if Smithfield decided to move forward, ratepayers on their bill would, would always have transparency in terms of the rate to compare. So there's a significant incentive for us to, to not launch, to not move forward with a rate unless we feel pretty secure that long-term, we're going to have a tough rate to beat versus Rhode Island Energy. Sure.
And, and Councilman, just to jump in really quick, not only is this about, you know, consumer choice, right? They'll have that side by side as, as Bart mentioned, but PUC has to approve this plan. So prior to it being sent in front of any resident of the town, PUC is going to have to approve it. So it's going to be vetted, it's going to be analyzed, it's not going to be just thrown in front of anybody. So this is, you know, with consumer protection in mind, this is where, where we're at.
What stage does the PUC do that?
Excuse me?
What stage does the PUC look at the plan?
And Bart, correct me if I'm wrong, but after you all would approve a contract with a company like, like Freedom, it would have to go before PUC for ratification, before anything gets out to your residents. Am I correct?
So there's a, there's an aggregation plan that, that we would come in and, and help you develop. You know, we have template plans that we go use for other communities that have been approved by the PUC before. Once that, um, plan is approved by the council to move forward, that plan is then submitted to the PUC, and that's well before any supply contracts or any commitments are made by Smithfield to, to truly move forward with the program.
I understand that. Thank you. And, um, you mentioned they would have a feedback session for residents. It seems counterintuitive to do it after we vote on it. Uh, we should probably do it before the council votes on that.
So, uh, there, there are a couple of opportunities. I just mentioned that, that, that public information session kind of during that launch, during that opt-out penancy period, but actually during plan development before the council approves on a final iteration of the plan, that's also open to public information, public input. Um, and so we would notice on social media and, you know, local papers that that was going on, and then invite everybody to come in and have their input in terms of what they would like to see, uh, from, from Community Choice Aggregation. And sometimes there's feedback of, you know, what if I don't want to participate? What are my rights and responsibilities there?
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Uh, once it's approved by the PUC, um, what kind of notice is provided to the residents?
Uh, so.
About, about, you know, what, that they're in this program and how to opt out, things like that?
Sure. Uh, great question. So there's, uh, uh, different, um, levels that different towns take advantage of in terms of public education and outreach. So if you have public access television here, for instance, one of the things that we do is we shoot, uh, FAQ videos and we post online, um, you know, a sit-down with, uh, with Chief Seltzer asking us about, you know, what are my rights and responsibilities in the program? We also get engaged with your social media. We have a dedicated website that we, um, that we, we, we put together for you. And then eventually, once we sign that supply agreement, we send out the notifications that will have the enumerated rights and abilities of each resident to opt out that goes to their home, their home mailbox. Um, and that's also got the QR code on it to make it very, very easy for them to, to opt out should they choose to do so.
Well, you, you say you send it out?
We send it out. That's paid for by us and the supplier. There's no, um, Smithfield funds that are used in either the launch or maintenance of this program.
Or cancellation?
Or cancellation. So for instance, if you decide that you do not want to move forward with this, we don't collect any fee and there's no early termination fee that we can collect.
Thank you.
Is there a minimum participation by town residents that you need to make this aggregate, or is the aggregate really just all the other municipalities?
So the, uh, it's a great question. So the supplier's going to take a look at historical aggregations, and they're going to build a model based upon your populations, which is about 22,000 residents, probably about, you know, 14,000 meters across town. They're going to build a model based upon that, and they're going to hope, based upon historic trends, that they're going to get about 85 to 90% adoption. If it falls below those numbers, it's important to note that the town is not on the hook for any, uh, deficiency in terms of where that model came in versus where it settled. So if you have a higher-than-average opt-out rate or attrition rate, 20%, 30%, although that's unlikely, if that were to happen, you're not obligated to make sure that you meet a certain criteria, the supplier is taking on that risk.
The supplier would still supply the energy even if the opt-out rate was that high?
Correct, they have to. They're contractually bound to do so. Um, and so when they're taking a look at, at numbers, they have to provide you with that rate for you to make a decision before the program can launch. So they're going to have to make an assumption about those participation levels, and if they're wrong, they assume that risk, not the town.
And that would only be?
Oh, uh, yeah, so a, a great point, uh, by Ryan. So if you have net metering at your home or you're on an electric assistance program or balanced budgeting, all those programs carry over to the new Smithfield CCA rate. So if you're enjoying some discounts as a result of the EAP program, if you're getting export, uh, um, uh, export revenues as a result of your solar coming, you know, going back to the grid, you'll still enjoy all of that on the Smithfield Community Choice Aggregation program. So everyone is held harmless based upon where they go for their, their, um, electricity commodity.
Okay, thank you. Is there any changes or additions to the infrastructure? If we change, everything remains the same?
Everything remains the same. Another great question I forgot to mention is even the billing. So, um, right now, your electricity charge shows up on page two of your Rhode Island Energy bill, where it says, "Energy services charge for Rhode Island Energy", it'll now read, "Smithfield Community Choice Aggregation Rate". And then on the side of, of, of page two of the bill, it'll have the Rhode Island Energy rate to compare so that the ratepayers always know when they're looking at the bill, how well they're performing versus Rhode Island Energy rate. If you do have those scenarios whereby the rate falls, the Rhode Island Energy rate falls below a long-term rate that we've secured, they'll have that information in real time when that happens and can seamlessly switch back over to Rhode Island Energy for a period of time until hopefully we're superior again.
So the energy supply comes from solar?
Uh, it, it actually depends as part of the plan as to how you'd like to navigate that. Some communities in their aggregation plan like to prioritize and maximize the savings opportunities, so they don't buy any, um, voluntary renewable inclusion. Other communities say, you know, geez, we'd like to buy 25% as our default offering, and so that would be a little bit higher from a cost perspective, but that would go into the aggregation plan that we would help create with you.
So it's customizable is what you're saying?
It's customizable.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, in terms of metering, um, Rhode Island Energy, I'm assuming, would continue to determine how much electricity is being used. Um, and so they would still control the, uh, the meters.
All the infrastructure, everything stays exactly the same. It would just be, from the customer's perspective, that small change on page two of the invoice, which now reads, "Smithfield Community Choice Aggregation" with a, with a new rate, um, that they'd be serviced by. But everything else, infrastructure-wise, stays exactly the same.
So what about the smart meters?
Yeah, and, and when there's an outage, any like that, metering issue, customer service issue, my bill's incorrect, you still call Rhode Island Energy as well. So, sorry, Councilman.
You're fine. Um, so smart meters? So now that Rhode Island Energy is going to charge people for opting out of those per month? What is $20 or something? So how does that work into this?
It, it, this, this program doesn't really impact that one way or the other, so that stays exactly the same regardless of whether or not you do this program.
So if somebody opts out of that smart meter and we use you and they use you, do they still have to pay that $20?
Unfortunately, it's, it's what they call a non-bypassable charge, so it'll still show up on your, on your invoice as a line item, and you can't escape it just by going with this program.
That's unfortunate. Thank you.
Any other questions? So I think the, the next, uh, thing would be if you get the information back to us that the chief requested and I requested.
Yep.
Then we'll put it back on the agenda for discussion.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll see where we go from there.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Minutes, number six. Move the minutes to November 4, 2025, executive session meeting held pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42465A1. Personnel to interview Frank Luca, the possibility of appointment to the Town Board of Commission to discuss Town Manager's Terms and Conditions of Employment, Section 42465A5. Real estate potential acquisition, sale, lease, and real property to be approved as recorded and sealed. I want to entertain a motion. I have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Item B, move the minutes to November 4, 2025, open session meeting to be approved as recorded. I want to entertain a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Consider discuss or act upon the following possible appointments and reappointments. A, Board of Canvassers appointed with the term expiring March of 2027.
Move that the Town Council hereby appoints Frank Luca to the Board of Canvassers with the term expiring March 2027.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Item A, public hearings. Conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss or act upon approving renewal intoxication bill, beverage licenses as listed as applied, subject to the compliance. intoxication beverage licenses as listed as applied, subject to the compliance of all state regulations, local ordinances, and certified good standing for Rhode Island Division of Taxation. And there are quite a few on there. I will make a motion as or suggest that we do as listed and take one vote. Lina, all.
All in order.
All in order.
I would make a motion, have it taken. When we do it this way, I want to do each last.
Okay. All right. All right. So be Class A retailers' beverage licenses. I'll entertain a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Class B beverage licenses.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Class B particular limited beverage license.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Class C, bar beverage license.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Class D beverage licenses.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss the act upon approving renewal of the following six particular only licenses to include renewal, extended hours of operation as listed as applied, subject to. I'll entertain a motion.
Can I chime in for one second?
Sure.
Don't forget to vote on everything if you so choose, with the exception of number four. That was all of the incorrect hours that needed to be changed.
All right. So we'll take number four out and put it on next meeting.
Motion to approve items one through three in five and six.
Another second.
There's 12 items.
On B?
No. There's only six.
What are we on? Am I on the wrong one?
Rachel, it's item, it's B?
We are on B.
Oh, my bad.
Motion, we have a second. Second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Item nine, licenses. Consider discuss the act upon approving renewal of 12 entertainment licenses as listed as applied and subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. I'll entertain a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Item B. Consider discuss the act upon approving the renewal of nine special dance licenses as listed and applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Item C. Consider discuss the act upon approving renewal of 38 particular only licenses as listed as applied and subject to compliance with all state regulations. I'll entertain a motion.
I think we did.
Any discussion?
Second.
Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Item 10, old business. Consider discuss the act upon authorizing the town manager's terms and conditions of employment. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Item 11, new business. Consider discuss the act upon approving tax abatements in the amount of $98,604.88.
Good evening, Chris List, town assessor. I had a couple of appeals and one, two of them were on some large office buildings, the Neighborhood Health Building and the Brown Physicians Building over on Douglas Pike. The appeals came in, the appellant had appraisals on both of them. I also got appraisals on both of them and we did avoid a lawsuit and everything by just negotiating this out, but it is a rather large, not excessively, I mean, it's within the budget to get this. Obviously, we're not going to collect every penny. So yeah, this is the result of some negotiating and kind of back and forth and some appraisals. And unfortunately, I can't support some of these office values anymore, so that's where we're at.
Would this be the recommendation of the assessor? This is the best number that we can get?
Yes, this is the best we could do with a, you know, they had a lawyer involved. I spoke to Pat Buckley, our attorney as well. And, you know, it was a back and forth and whatnot, but they had an appraisal, I had an appraisal. It wouldn't have turned out any better or worse if we went to court, but we avoided that whole entire ordeal by just coming to this agreement.
It seems fair based on what you heard.
It is. I mean, our appraisals, especially on the Neighborhood Health, the appraisal that the town ordered and the appraisal that the appellant ordered were very close and they were both very much lower than the value that we had had on that. It's a large, single-tenanted office building and just, we haven't been raising the value on it much at all, but it just, the market for office buildings is just so bad now that we couldn't support it. And so again, it wasn't like, you know, I had an appraisal over here and they had, our appraisals were both similar and less than the assessed value. So unfortunately, we got a little bit stung. But it's, again, it mitigated a lot of the damages. No court, no lawsuits and everything. So stayed right in the right of the town.
Chris, could you also explain to them the period of abatement? We're not taking it all on one year.
Right. So they wanted, they actually wanted a lot more than that, but what we ended up doing was instead of giving them everything they wanted this year, part of the negotiating was to do it as a credit in the future year, which is much easier to budget for and much less of a surprise. So you just build that kind of right into your rates and everything like that. So it's, that was, that was a lot of what the negotiating was. And also they, with this, with this agreement, they will not appeal the value again the next year and the year after. So we're going to hold the value, which was basically the average of our appraisals. We hold that value until the next revaluation and we will not have any more appeals or any more action against these properties. Going forward, I'm still here doing this, which I expect to be, when we do the next revale, I will sit down with this property owner and go over these values with them, you know, before we even do the billing to ensure that everybody's on board. As this came, I didn't really expect this. We didn't really go up a lot on these, but again, these office buildings are just, they really, you can't use these old models that we've been using anymore because they just, they just don't sell like that anymore and they just can't get tenants, especially a single-tenanted 115,000 square foot building is really not something that's very desirable in this today's market, unfortunately.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions? Chris? No questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye. Nays. Ayes have it. Item B. Thank you. Item B. Consider discuss the act upon authorizing the extension for the purchase and sales agreement for Gemini Housing Corporation for the purchase of William Windsor School located at 562 Putnam Pike, AP 6, Lot 49.
Mr. President, of the Board, Joseph Tadino, attorney for the Gemini Housing Corporation. I know most of you are familiar with the purchase and sale agreement, but if not, I can pass these out again.
We have it.
We have it.
We have it in our packet?
Yeah, we have it, yeah.
Thank you.
How many trees did you kill, Joe?
No, I had those in there from before. If you look on page three, paragraph B, the second paragraph thereunder, it indicates that the buyer may extend the permitting and financing periods for an additional 240 Right now, the purchase and sale agreement is set to run out January 1, 2026, and we are looking for an additional 240 days. I have Seth Sokoloff here, who is going to state what has been done up to date to bring the council up to date as to what the efforts have been and where we are in the process. Seth?
Good evening. Seth Sokoloff, Barbara Sokoloff, associate, Providence, Rhode Island. So since we last reported to the council, we have gained planning board approval, as you are probably aware. In addition, we have secured a couple of pre-development grants/loans to help us get through the architecture and various things that we need to do to gain further approvals. If I might talk a little bit about the application cycle here. The consolidated application through Rhode Island Housing is due December 18. And on that, by that day, we need to show them that we have site control through the amount of time that it takes to close a project.
I'm sorry, did you say December what?
18.
Sorry, I got distracted by whatever.
All right. So, so we.
You said you have to demonstrate to them that you have control over the site?
Correct.
Is there a period of time that you have to demonstrate to them that you have that control?
So I think a safe amount would be till April of 2027. So April of 2026, April or May, we would expect to know if the project is funded. And for us to gain that approval, we need to show that we have control for a year beyond that. So it's a bit more than the number of days that were cited in the PNS. 365 beyond April.
So how many days are you requesting if you know specifically?
From which date?
So am I correct in saying that you're requesting an extension of the contract for one year from April?
Correct.
Okay. So that's one year and five months or so? Fair to say? Okay. The PNS mentions diligently pursuing the permits and funding, which would be what would trigger the possibility of an extension. Can you talk about your timeline a little bit about how you've been pursuing those things?
Sure. So the major effort has been to perform the traffic study and the civil engineering that were necessary to get the planning approval. And so that's been the majority of the effort. Currently going on now are geotechnical engineering studies where they're going to go out and drill some holes in the ground to make sure it can support the foundation. So that's in process, should happen in the next couple of weeks.
What about for the financing specifically? Because that's what the PNS delineates.
Sure. So this is all in preparation for the application that is due on the 18th, and all those things are required, both the planning board approval, the geotechnical analysis, the environmental studies that were done last fall. So we're doing everything we can possibly do to put our best foot forward in an application on the 18th.
I'm hearing three distinct events from you since September of 2024. Is that, I just want to make sure I have the full list.
Yeah.
That sounds about right to you?
I'm not counting, but.
No, I know. Okay. That's fine.
Sure.
I just have a couple of concerns. The taxpayers are paying for the oil and the electricity in that building. And 2027, it's a long way off.
Yes, sir.
It's a lot of money taken out of the budget. So do you have, do you have the capabilities? What is that? Do you have capabilities of paying for the oil and the electricity in that building until, until the final closing?
I cannot give you a definitive answer to that. I don't have the budget for what those costs are, nor necessarily funds to pay for them. But that is, in theory, possible.
Right. So, I mean, I think the council would want that answer before we make any decisions on moving forward with another 240 days.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. The purchase and sale agreement does indicate that we would pay the carrying costs.
Right.
Which include the electric and insurance. I understand that the insurance could not be, I don't think segregated for that building, but in lieu of that, we would certainly be open to paying the oil.
All right. Well, right now, no one's doing.
We have never been billed for any.
No, I understand that. So we're going to need to stop doing that, the oil and electricity, Mr. Manager, so we can take care of that and you're willing to pay that.
Well, I'm just saying you should have been doing that all along, that you should have been paying the carrying costs.
The heat was supposed to be shut off.
You can't shut the heat off.
Oh.
You can't shut it off. I mean, the building, the frozen pipes and everything else would happen if you shut the heat off.
It has a fire suppression system that has to be maintained so the heat can't be turned off in the building.
So maybe we should bag bill them, chief.
What we want to do is we have a separate account for the oil that goes into that building.
Mr. President, may I ask? I remember you came to the council, or a representative for the project came to the council maybe a year ago or so regarding the property next door. And there was some statements made that that property was required for you guys to move forward with the project as submitted to the planning board. Is that still the case? Or did you guys, were you guys able to find out another way to, to build the project, basically? Because I'm wondering if the extension maybe isn't feasible if the project is even able to be built without that piece of land.
You're talking about the piece of land to the rear?
I believe so.
Yeah. So we've configured this project so that that is not necessary to the project at this point. But the plans that were submitted to the planning board and the approval did not include that process.
Mr. President, I was wondering if we should just move this off to another meeting, not even the next meeting, until we get our questions answered and more information in terms of who's paying what and all of that.
Well, he just agreed to pay. He just agreed to pay the electric and the oil.
Well.
So we just have to stop billing.
He's required to pay by the agreement.
Yeah, right. We just need to bill.
So can you repeat again? A few dates were thrown out. So what you're asking from us this evening is to extend it to what exact date? Please.
So to give the council the most leeway, we would need the PNS extended to the end of May, which is the latest we would know about funding, with a by right extension for another year. So that would give you an out that if it weren't approved for funding in May, we would not have a by right extension. But, but to get an application approved, we need to have that by right extension to get the clue.
I understand what you're saying. My concern.
It's a little different than what is in the current BNS.
Sure, I understand that. My concern would be that the public does not have this request for May 31st, 26, by right, with by right for extension for another year. So they're not seeing this. And this is new to me too, this, tonight, so I, you know, I think we should table.
I wonder if the listener has an opinion on whether or not this is even an extension we could do based on the contract?
Hang on one second. I think what we need to do, listen to Dino, if you would. I'm going to put this on the next agenda on December 2nd.
going to put this on the next agenda on December 2nd. I need a formal proposal from you, not just a word of mouth proposal. The 240, what you need to do, what you're willing to pay, well, actually, you have to pay, but we, I don't think we need-
It's the terms of the proposed extension, so I can digest it.
Right. Yeah. Is that okay with you?
That's fine. So, you, you want an exact, uh, extension length?
Proposal.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, sir, does that include the addendum that you are speaking about? Is that what that is?
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll see you December 2nd.
That's fine.
Very good. Thank you. Make a motion to table and put it on December 2nd. Any more discussion?
Second. Hearing not all in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Item C. Consider discuss act upon authorizing a bid award to the townwide on-call electrical services.
Good evening, members of Congress, uh, Congress, yeah, of the council. My name's Carlos Santos. I'm the procurement agent for the town, and I'm here to answer any questions, especially on the next few items on the agenda.
Any questions on Carlos on the townwide call electrical services? Hearing not all entertain a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Item D. Consider discuss act upon rescinding a request for proposal for the townwide call on-call plumbing service. I'll entertain a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Item E. Consider discuss act upon authorizing a bid award to townwide on-call plumbing services. Carlos, any update on that?
What happened was I judged, I rushed into a new RFP without looking at the old contract that I had with the supplier. The old contract had two extensions that we were able to take. I reviewed the costs from the new proposal to the costs that were on the extension, and the extension was much lower. It was about $13 an hour less for a labor. So, I called the company. They happened to be the same company that bid on both proposals, and they agreed to honor the extension. So, that's why I wanted to do that.
Okay. So, our vote would be to approve the one-year extension?
Correct.
Motion, Mike Tomp? Second?
Second.
Any more calls in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Item F. Consider discuss act upon rescinding a request for proposal for townwide mechanical services. I'll entertain a motion. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Item G. Consider discuss an act upon rescinding a request for proposals for wide on-call HVAC services. I'll entertain a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Item H. Consider discuss act upon authorizing a bid award for townwide on-call HVAC system and mechanical services. Carlos?
That should not be a bid award. That should be to be advertised. What I did is I rushed to get-
So, this is an RFP, a request for proposals?
Correct. To advertise it though, not to award. I shouldn't say award. I did two separate RFPs, one for HVAC, one for mechanical. I did some research through the country in our state, and most communities are now combining the two into one RFP, not the way I did it. I had two separate RFPs. It makes more economical sense to combine the two together-
Yeah.
-and we'll get better rates. I just want to advertise that one RFP.
Very good. Thank you. So, any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Is there anybody here from the school department?
I mean, I can answer to it as well. I'm not directly involved, but I worked on the RFP. If you have questions, I think I can answer why.
All right. Item I. Consider discuss act upon rescinding a request for proposals for high school athletic trainer on behalf of the school department. I'll entertain a motion.
Carlos?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Item J. Excuse me. Consider discuss act upon authorizing a request for proposals for high school athletic trainer on behalf of the school department. Carlos?
The reason we did that, the original RFP, the bid we received for that was like double what they had in the budget, so we couldn't accept it. That's why the first motion I asked to rescind that one. We're going to re-advertize with a lower scope of work for hours needed at facilities like football games, soccer games. So, it should come in much lower and within the school budget that they have.
Carlos, were you involved in this? Because the last, I guess it was not last meeting, but a meeting prior, they said they, they didn't have an athletic trainer since last May.
That is true. As far as I know, they have not had an athletic trainer in over a year.
So, what, let me ask you this question. What happens if they come in, the next bid comes in, that's not acceptable? How are they covering these games? Are they paying per diem?
That, I don't know the answer to. That part I don't know. I'm not at the games.
Well, how are they covering their games?
Again, I don't want to speak in an area that I have no knowledge of. I know about the specifics of the RFPs, and I know what they had in their budget.
Yeah. Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a quick thing. The date for proposals due is, says October 22nd, so I'm assuming that will need to be changed. That's going to be, all right. Thank you.
Motion was made. Second, any more discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Item K. Consider discuss act upon scheduling a work session with the school committee. Mr. Manager?
So, attending the school work session last Thursday, we agreed to continue to count council and the school committee to meet. I had a discussion with Councilman Ionati today regarding how to set this up and what we came up with. The four, the four meetings, I'm not sure exactly, we're not sure exactly where that came from. I think it was something that was decided upon somewhere in the past. But anyways, we were thinking three general meetings spread out between the fall, winter, and spring. And the fourth meeting with the town council, budget and finance review board, and the school committee. So, during the process of putting the budget together on that early part of it, as it's going through the BFRB, everybody will know what's going on with the budget. So, I have spoke to Lisa and I are working on some potential dates, but I want to make sure the council is agreeable to do something like that so we can, we can firm up some dates to do that.
And I think this is a good process to follow, and, you know, we can incorporate the requirements of Rhode Island law, Title 16, which requires the, you know, an annual joint meeting to review the revenue and expenditure projections and discuss the budget, and also to meet with the school committee prior to, at least 60 days, but not more than 90 days prior to formal submission of their budget to the town. So, we can do that in the course of this year of three meetings with the school committee, adding the fourth one while we're actually in the budget process in the spring, when we, you know, in the spring, we meet with the budget board after they submit their meeting. We should also be meeting with the, with the school committee. They are a very large portion of our budget, so I think that's very important.
Can you just clarify, you're proposing four meetings next year or three, Councilman?
Three plus one, right? We talked about-
It's three plus one, four.
Okay. Two before budget or one?
One would be as part of the budget process.
And one be like before in Q1, correct?
Right.
The 90 days before, the 60, 90 days before? Well, the budget's not till June or July, so I'm assuming that'd be two before then, correct?
Well, the budget, the 90 days before is prior to their submission of their budget to the town manager. So, that would come toward the end of the year. Plus, we have an annual budget meeting with them as well. That could be incorporated into one of the meetings or two of the meetings. Important thing is that we are meeting with the school committee. When we meet with the school committee, we have communication, and I think a lack of communication between the council and the school committee has been a problem, at least since I've been on the council. So, I think that, you know, this will help alleviate some of the issues that have come up, especially with respect to the budget process.
So, which months are we proposing to have these meetings in?
So, unless the council has any specific months, I was going to work that out with Lisa, and then that would be given to the council to decide to approve it, and her, and the school committee as well.
So, you would propose a certain set schedule after getting our availability, and that would come before, so we'd vote on it?
Right.
Okay. And so, I'm assuming the school committee would be involved in this as well?
They'll have to do the same thing. We're, we're going to check both committees-
Schedules.
-schedules and then make sure the dates work for everybody.
And they would vote on it as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? I don't think we need to vote on that, do we?
No.
No. Public comment?
Ed DeMels, 75, Whipper Road. In regards to William Windsor Elementary School, I know this isn't-
Ed, can you speak up? We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I know this isn't ordinarily done this way, but I read in the breeze last week that traffic in that area is very bad. Now, I know the president was talking about oil and electric. I'm thinking further down the line. I'd like to see the lawyer, the town solicitor, the lawyer we have, write up a contract for this Gemini, that if there's any death or anything like that, they cannot sue the town. They're responsible, even though they own the property. They are responsible because the traffic is going to be horrendous in that area, and I'd like to see Lime Rock just five $1 million homes. No, none of this craziness, and, because that's going to be another bad show. I'd just like to see a proposal, a contract that, a, a, a letter written that goes with their, their proposal to buy, even if it, maybe, I don't know if it's already done, that they're responsible, and they're responsible. Lime Rock and Windsor, they are responsible if anything happens, because pulling out of that on 44, even Newport Creamery, that area is bad. If they proposed about 50 one-bedroom apartments, I don't know, maybe, maybe that's why they're waiting for this time, because the state can't figure it out on how they're going to come out on 44. So, I'd like to see some kind of a contract, you own whatever happens to the people, not the town. They can't touch us. Thank you.
Any others? Hearing not all entertain a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes have it. Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.